Well, good evening. I'll call the meeting to order of the Burnsville Planning Commission for Monday, August 28, 2017. Commissioners, thank you. We have a straggling band of a quorum here tonight. Staff, thank you as well, and thank you to everyone who's joining us this evening. Our first item is adoption of the agenda. Staff, any changes or additions?
No changes.
Commissioners? If not, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item two, approval of the minutes of the August 14 Planning Commission. Any changes from staff or commissioners on that?
I do.
Commissioner Benke?
Yeah, under the first item, the second motion failed for lack of a second, but it still says Benke moved and Sings seconded, so it was just Benke moved a motion. There's three C's.
Okay.
And then after item four, I'm guessing that probably wanted to be a comma. The last line of that, the last part of that sentence.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Anything else? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That brings us to item three on our agenda, which is the continued public hearing for the application of Menards Incorporated and Fairchild Living Trust of 1995 for a planned unit development amendment for 3100 and 2700 Highway 13 West. Excuse me, Menards, lost train of thought, med sensor. Menards Incorporated proposes to purchase land from 3100 Highway 13 West, the Fairchild property, to allow Menards to expand the size of an accessory building and modify the outdoor storage area north and west of the main store building located at 2700 Highway 13 West. We have Mr. Weber. Did I say that right?
You did.
Mr. Waiver.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Vice Chair and Planning Commission. As you recall, this is a continued public hearing. We opened the public hearing at our meeting two weeks ago, but when we were reviewing the additional land that Menards was looking to acquire from Fairchild's property, it was realized that an amendment would need to be included on the Fairchild property, and the public hearing notice did not include that information. So we needed to continue this item for two weeks for that proper hearing. The application itself, Menards' proposal has not changed. There has been some discussion about the drainage utility easement that is in the 10-foot area looking to be purchased, so I will be going over a couple revised conditions at the end of this presentation. But for the audience, both here and on TV, we're talking about the Menards at 2700 Highway 13 West, which is zoned GHI PUD. I would note on this picture here on the right-hand side, the original PUD actually included all three parcels that you see here. The former Menards, which is now the Fairchild Equipment, the liquor store closer to Highway 13, and the new Menards. So it is amending two of the three parcels in the original request. So what Menards is doing is, you can see kind of on the north side of the site, the kind of red box, to the south of the existing black box, that's the existing outdoor unheated warehouse. They are looking to expand that by about 19,000 square feet, and then they are looking to move their outdoor storage to the west, which includes the purchase of 10 feet from Fairchild's property in order to allow the racking system to be placed outside of the drainage utility easement for the city. This is the Fairchild site from our last PUD approval. Just because we had some discussions of the green space in this proposal, the green space got created, but not all the way up to 25 percent. But there is an area here, kind of to the southwest of the site, and some areas in the rear that actually increased the green space. Didn't get it to 25 percent, but got it closer as a part of that proposal. This is the 10 feet. It's on Fairchild's east side, but will become the new west property line of Menards. These eight trees in this location will be taken down in order to install the racking system and fencing for the new outdoor storage yard, and then later that will be the discussion of the utilities that are there and how that could be arranged. This area highlighted in yellow is the box culvert that was the issue that Menards is trying to solve by acquiring the additional 10 feet. Inside this easement is the box culvert that actually drains much of the central portion of central northern portion of Burnsville. It goes all the way from Crystal Lake to the Minnesota River, so it's a very important piece of infrastructure. This is the, essentially, the existing conditions. You'll see that to the south of the accessory building is a stormwater piping that goes into the stormwater pond to the northwest. What they will be removing is the pavement, basically between the existing building and the accessory building, and then there will be a requirement of some of this stormwater infrastructure to be removed due to that expanded building. So then this is essentially the new pavement that will be installed, including revising some of those stormwater infrastructure to make it work. Grading plan, you'll see there's very little change to the grading with the exception of that 10-foot area, well, in the drainage utility easement, you know, has some topography. I'm not really sure if that's a berm or if that's a ditch, but either way, that will be flattened to allow for the new pavement. This is the, well, this is going to be the south side of the new outdoor warehouse. It will be uncovered to the south. This is the existing warehouse to the north. It's a tip-up concrete precast panel. You'll see here, this would be essentially the roof line at the existing warehouse, and how they're going to construct the new warehouse is essentially extend a shed roof off of the existing, this is the other side. The building material there will be the same emerald-green metal paneling that's on the existing warehouse, as well as on the portions of the north and west facades, or north and west areas of the existing retail building. That also would be that green paneling. This is the photometric plan, which will meet all the city standards when installed, and this is a couple of examples of that racking system that I was referring to. It's about a four-foot wide racking system, and then it has two-by-eight treated wood as the fencing on the side. The light poles will actually be mounted to that racking system. This was kind of an old proposal, that there would be space for trees behind the fencing, but in the new revised condition, there will not be space for those trees. The five-foot width is pretty narrow, but as well as the utilities that are going to be there are going to limit the types of trees that could be installed. So from your staff report, there's a couple changes to the drainage utility easement conditions here. So what we did is we redlined what we are now asking for the revised recommendation. So the staff is recommending, the planning commission recommend, to the city council approval of the PUD amendment to allow for a 19,244 square foot addition to the existing warehouse accessory building, and a 29,096 square foot addition to the outdoor storage yard for Menards located at 2700 Highway 13 West with the following conditions. First, that all the previous PUD and CUP conditions remain in effect. Second, that a waiver subdivision to add that 10 feet to the west side of the subject property shall be approved and filed with Dakota County prior to any site or building work. Again, we're redlining, we're removing that drainage utility easement, and there'll be a new condition at the end that will try to address that issue. So conditions three, four, and five are essentially just increased in number. Three being, the plan shall be modified to achieve 25 percent overall green space requirement for the Menards subject site. Condition four is that the plans shall be created to maintain 21.3 percent overall green space on the existing Fairchild site. As I mentioned before, Fairchild's doesn't meet the 25 percent, but with their last approval, they increased their green space. That's how the 21.3 percent came to be. Number five is that the plans shall be modified to provide the size, number, and species of trees to propose to be removed and to be replaced. Any trees removed over four inches in diameter or greater in accordance with the ordinance. Number six was also related to drainage utility easement, so that was redlined. The new condition six is, Menards shall coordinate with all utility companies and pay for the relocation of utilities, and provide the city with a copy of new recorded easement covering the utility relocation. And then finally, condition seven will be the city engineer shall approve all utility modifications and easement changes. That replaces the previous two drainage utility easement conditions that we redlined. And we do have Brian Hilger here that could, Hill Gardner, sorry, that could answer any of the drainage utility easement questions that you may have. I'm sorry. Just a reminder, we continued the public hearing. We didn't close the public hearing, so we will need to essentially reopen the public hearing for any testimony, and then close it following that testimony.
Okay. So commissioners, questions? Commissioner Benke?
In the previous package, there was a recommendation on how to acquire, get the green space back up again for both parcels. That's, is that, are you just referring back to that now, or is, did we take that out in terms of?
Well, the previous recommendation talked about what the ordinance lists as potential items, such as the landscape islands, green roofs. They're afforded any provision that's within the ordinance, so it was redundant to really add that.
Sure. Okay. And we're basically just saying that neither parcel shall go below what they currently have with their green space.
I think Menards will go down .3 percent. They're just a little over.
To the 25, to the 25 minimum, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions from commissioners for Mr. Waiver?
Chair, I have a couple of questions.
Commissioner Bradrick.
I guess my first question would be directed to staff, or help me clarify, we were talking two separate PUDs, or there was one PUD? Did we do, Deb, one PUD when we tore down the Cub and built the Menards? Or is, I thought we had a separate PUD that we did for Fairchild.
There are, the overall property is one planned unit development that started out for all of the properties. They were all under the same ownership for Menards at the time that we did that. Then the Menards was built, and the property that Fairchild now owns was sold. They needed to have, I believe we did at least two amendments associated with the bus company use, and then also when they made the changes to the site for Fairchild equipment, there were some changes there. But all three properties, including the MGM Liquor Warehouse, are all part of this overall planned unit development. It's just that, depending on the lot, there are some different specifications in terms of use for the Fairchild piece.
One PUD, different PUD amendments per lot.
Correct.
So if I remember correctly, when we did Fairchild, part of the green space was, we took a portion of the parking lot out, and we allowed them to have outdoors display of equipment, and that was all in grass, correct?
That's correct, yes.
So that was, if I can remember correctly, that's how we got to the green, yeah, that's how we got to the green space on the Fairchild.
Yes, correct. That was increased, yes.
So sometimes I, you know, try to narrow it down to like a simple solution. So as I think about both PUDs, and I'm just trying to wrap around my head, in the, really, Menards is purchasing 5,105 square feet of land from the Fairchild lot. Currently, that entire 5,000 square feet is green space.
Correct.
And for it to function appropriately for Menards, it needs to be hardscape. So really, is there, was there discussions, or how regardless of the Menards property or the Fairchild property, to find 5,000 square feet anywhere on the original PUD to try to get some green space?
Our conversations.
Because it seems kind of confusing to me, and we're really, we're, you know, we're splitting hairs with percentage on this side of the lot and percentage on this side of the lot. And originally, you know, when Menards, you know, tore down the old Cub and had a PUD for the entire property, I don't know if we, what that particular PUD amendment was, or where we were at with green space, but it seems like we've been kind of struggling with these properties from a green space standpoint. And I also understand it, it may not be feasible, but, because you said in our original meeting that it was not feasible to add enough islands on the Menards side to be able to have them still park cars and offset. Because part of our solution, and I don't remember, in our background, it says part of our solution is a green roof, which my time on the council, or on the planning commission, I don't remember us ever asking for, maybe I've missed that. And then it says another alternate, you know, something else that's out there. So I really kind of need to know, what are their other options? What kind of burden are we placing on them to be able to meet in kind of those splitting hairs of percentages?
So the first part of your question, we focused mostly with our conversation with Menards on the green space. We have talked with Gary Fairchild, but he's, you know, trying to help Menards out, but other than that, keep his site as much as possible the same. We've never had an in-depth conversation with Gary about, could there be some green space added to his site? But we're hoping to leave the conditions open, that if Menards wants to have that conversation with Gary, that would be fine. I don't know if I arrived as far as that it's infeasible, but we did the math, and it would be 17 additional islands in addition to the three that they installed to make that. So I don't know that you're really making a leap that, you know, is too far beyond that. The green roofs come from your ordinance. Your ordinance states a number of alternative methods to achieve green space, and green roofs are one of them. Couple of the other are natural vegetation and low-water plants. I don't, you know, that doesn't really get you more area. That's more kind of the, what you put in those areas. But the condition would be that they need to meet the green space as provided by the code, and then essentially Menards and/or Fairchild's would work with staff to revise the plans accordingly to arrive at that number, but not specifically, which I think maybe was Commissioner Benke's question before, not specifically in the condition saying it's going to be a green roof, or it's going to be 17 landscape islands. It's, you're going to meet the code, or at least in Fairchild's case, maintain the green space that's there, but work with staff to figure out how to do that.
Brian, is the original PUD, both, all three properties in compliance with stormwater management?
Yes, Commissioners and Chair, they are, they do meet all the stormwater requirements. The pond or the storm sewer pipe is sized accordingly. In fact, it's actually conservative for more impervious area, so by losing green space, it does not have an impact on stormwater. So you can feel safe there that that is designed appropriately, the system is.
Because the pond behind the original PUD, the original building that's tied to the new one, is the pond for both, are all three properties.
Correct.
But the pond is currently on the Menards site.
Yes.
But it covers the stormwater for Fairchild and for MGM.
That is correct.
If I remember correctly. Okay. That's all the questions I have right now. I may have some later.
Okay. Do we have the applicant here? Do we have questions for the applicant? Should I?
Sure.
Sir, if you want to identify yourself and your address for the record, we would appreciate it.
Sure. Rodney Wykem Menard Incorporated, 5101 Menard Drive, Eau Claire, Wisconsin, 54703.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Yes. Thanks for having me.
Commissioners, questions?
Sir, can you kind of walk us through, I mean, I appreciate working with the neighbor to the, sorry, Chair, I didn't acknowledge you, I'm sorry.
No, I acknowledge you.
Oh, okay. The neighbor to the west.
From Menards' standpoint, do we believe we can meet the green space requirement on your, on just your property?
I think it would be difficult to do. From an operational standpoint, it would be 17 additional islands in the parking lot. With the three islands that we are proposing, there's already a parking reduction of 12 spots, so that would be another 60 or 70 spots that I think we would be losing in parking. We also run into some concerns with guest traffic in there while we're installing that amount of islands. Where do they go, and how does the parking lot function? So we tried to get as close as we could to the 25 percent, realizing that it's going to take 20 islands in total, realizing that we can't get there. So in lieu of that, or what I tried to do was add additional plantings in addition to the islands that made sense from a site planning perspective, and then beefed up the landscaping, and all of the islands there will be getting upgrades with additional plantings as well as along the new proposed fence. There'll be a number of bushes and plantings along that fence as well. In total, about 150 additional plantings.
And that would be immediately to the west of the backside of your racking?
Correct.
Okay.
And within the existing parking lot islands.
And then that is all on, that would all be within the 10 feet that you purchased from Fairchild?
Correct.
And so the...
I could, so it's, these shown and read, they're kind of groupings of three, but then, as he's stating, there's groupings that would be planted within all of the existing islands as well. I think it's 63 of those plantings are the ones on the west side of the fence. The rest of the plantings are scattered throughout the existing islands or within the new islands that will be created.
And the presentation, as it's stated, gets us to 23.8 on the Menards side, and it leaves 20.5 on the Fairchild side, because they were at 21. And we got them to 21.3 because it was lower than that, if I remember right. It was in the 20s or something with the addition.
I think it was even below 10 percent.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Yeah, it was 6.6, according to the background.
Yep.
I'm sorry, I missed that. Sorry.
Right, that's okay.
So to make sure I'm understanding this correctly, so the lost green space because of this is solely in that, the red dotted line on here, that area?
That's the lost green space for the Fairchild site. The existing drainage utility easement that has that box culvert is the lost green space on the Menards side.
Okay. Ms. Carroll?
Thank you. Just for the commissioners, from a staff perspective, our recommendation is based on, we consistently make the recommendation that you meet the ordinance, or at minimum, don't go below what the current standard is with the current amount on site. A couple of things, you don't necessarily have to have that many number of islands. It would be possible, for example, to, on the parking lot, perhaps widen the, you know, take out that row of parking on the far east, for example, to get additional space. There are other things, we are not, the ordinance isn't limited to just adding parking islands to make that up. Saying that, however, Planning Commission and Council does have the opportunity, if you believe that the benefit is there through the PUD, you can approve deviations to that. An issue with this part of the city is that we are in the drinking water overlay, and also this part of the city, we don't allow infiltration. A lot of the times, we're able to grant, allow the property owner to use pervious pavers or pervious pavement, and they can get up to a 10% credit on their green space. That option is not available in this location because of the drinking water overlay. Thank you.
I understand that. Okay.
Commissioners, additional questions for the applicant?
I sort of did the same math, you know, at roughly 200, 180 to 200 square feet per parking stall, it's, you know, and it's really, the 5,000 square feet from Fairchild, when we take that off, I do know Commissioner Bradrick, then here with the numbers, because when you remove that square footage from Fairchild, all of a sudden, that 21.3 number represents more than 5,000 square feet and all that kind of stuff. But this is all just one big PUDs, supposedly. So, I mean, I do think that because of what you just said about the drinking water and just because of what the existing PUD is, that it makes sense to try to maintain the existing levels somehow. I struggle with a green roof in this situation where it isn't part of a larger project. That's quite a undertaking from a structural standpoint.
And that got to my, going back to my very original question, I know sometimes you think I'm just crazy and rambling.
No, no.
It all comes together, it all comes together.
If we can figure out how to find 5,000 square feet on the entire PUD somewhere, so all of these changes, net-net, we don't go backwards, and whether that's, you know, I don't mean to suggest, but, you know, I shop there all the time, and Ms. Geros is correct that I'd rather see maybe losing those parking stalls along the drive aisle that takes you back to the yard, no one ever parks there, in some cases. Or could, you know, is there, I know there's expense associated with it, but can we do the same thing somewhere on the Fairchild property that would be at Menards' expense, but we look at the entire PUD and we don't limit, I guess somehow I was trying not to get at limiting in all three spots? How do we say, if we look at the original PUD and we, all we're asking is to not go backwards?
Right.
Is what I was trying to get at. I don't know if that's a solution or not that we could work with staff on.
Any additional questions for the...
I'll stop talking.
For the applicant? I'll ask one question and we'll let you go back to your seat. You've characterized the green space requirement as being challenging. Is it doable from Menards' perspective, maintaining the current level, levels?
From our perspective, the plan that we have here has us been working through staff to try to get as close as we can to that number. As I mentioned, there's concerns with continuing to limit the parking and with how the parking lot functions. So while I understand that taking out a row of parking on the east side might help get us back to that 25%, I'm losing, you know, 30, 30 or 40 parking spots, and this is one of our busier stores that does good sales. I've been there several times over the past few months, and it's always busy, so I don't think this is an instance where we would feel comfortable taking out that many parking stalls.
That's your staff parking, isn't it? Sorry.
Yeah, and our staff parks around the exterior of the building. Now, if it were as simple as sliding in the pallet racking, you know, that's something, obviously, we looked at before, we were buying that additional 10 feet, but there's limitations because of the drainage easement there. So we left as much green space there on that westerly property line as we can without encroaching on that easement. So I'm not sure where else we can add that green space.
Thank you. So I think I need to reopen, since it was continued, do we need a motion to reopen the public hearing, or do I just reopen?
It can be...
Just reopen.
Okay. So we will open the public hearing on this at exactly 7:00. That was very well timed. If there's anyone who would like to speak on this, feel free to come to the panel. I think we will then close the public hearing at 7:01. Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
Go ahead, Commissioner Benke.
I'm not sure. I guess from a practical standpoint, it's difficult, but I struggle with trying to drop the green space below what currently exists. That's sort of my take on it, just simplifying.
And I, I would agree, I've got concerns about that as well. I do think there are some practical difficulties here as well. So I actually would be open to support the variance requested by the applicant, but we've got three of us here tonight, so.
Yes, I know.
Commissioner Bradrick, you may be the decider.
I am, I certainly understand the practical difficulties, and I would be inclined in this situation to, I mean, my, my original request would still be there, I'd like to be able to try to find it somewhere on the Fairchild property, which seems to be easier. I completely understand what you're saying about parking. I understand retail and have worked retail and understand that. Unfortunately, we're overparked on the Fairchild property, and there's a fair amount of hard surface behind their building, but they need it for parking. You know, I, it is good to know that we overengineered the stormwater, so we're not, because we do struggle in that part of the city, the aquifer is closer to the surface because it's closer to the river, and it's in our overlay district, so we have to be responsible for trying to maintain our water system, so we don't end up having a, well, it'd be different than a Flint, Michigan, but we want to, we want to make sure that we maintain that. So I'm a little torn, I mean, it's some small numbers. I'd really like to see how, what it would take to be able to have the entire original PUD meet, but if that's not feasible, and I guess I asked that, had staff hadn't looked at any other changes on the Fairchild side of the PUD.
No, we've not.
Everything we looked at was simply on the, on the Menards side from a...
Yes.
So it was a purchase, move, and then the variances get back to that we've created this new number for Fairchild and a new number for Menards, and it comes down to 5,000 square feet of blacktop.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. I would be, I would be in favor of allowing the variance.
Is that a motion? We'll need a motion.
I'm not sure, I'd have to have Deb give me some direction first, because we'd have to...
If I may, I think if you remove Conditions 3 and 4 as proposed on your screen, and then it just re-numbers the rest of them, that would address that issue.
Remove the new 3 and 4.
Correct. So if you wanted to make your motion, the recommendation with Conditions 1, 2, 5, 6, and 7, that would achieve the deviation you were referring to?
Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Commissioner Bradrick.
I'd like to have the, I move that the Planning Commission recommend a City Council approval of the PUD amendment to allow a 19,244 square foot addition to the existing warehouse accessory building, and a 29,000 square foot addition outdoor storage yard for Menards located at 2700 Highway 13 West with the following conditions. As stated from our background, Condition 1, modified, or original Condition 1, 2, modified Condition 5, 6, and 7.
Is it, the new 7? Motion's clear?
The new 7.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Benke.
I'm just curious if we would be able to leave 3 and 4, but direct the applicant to work with staff to maximize the numbers to the best of their ability. For example, should they find that working with Fairchild could work, then they could get back to those numbers.
Does...
Commissioner Bradrick.
Ms. Geros? Open-ended things like that can be difficult for the staff to manage?
I think if you want to do that, we can try to work with the applicant. This item will not be going to the City Council until their September 19th meeting, so that does give us, we have a little bit of time where we could work with the applicant and check back with Fairchild to see if there's an opportunity to do that, and...
I'd like to, I'd like to maximize the green space if possible, but I don't know if that's a separate recommendation, or do we would leave 3 and 4 and remove the percentages?
My recommendation would be that you leave the motion, you know, as you stated, with the specific, you know, Conditions 1, 2, 5, 6, and 7, and then add another one that staff and the applicant work together to determine options for maintaining green space at those levels, or improving to the extent possible.
Maintain as much green space as possible, going to the City Council. Would that be helpful at all?
Yeah, I mean, I'm willing to work with staff in any capacity we can. From a Menards' site perspective, we've kind of put our best foot forward on landscaping and islands there, so I'm not sure there's much more we'd be willing to accommodate or do on the Menards parcel.
And I, getting back to my original comments, I understood that. I was just trying to see if we could make the numbers work on the whole PUD.
There's any other options?
So number eight would be worded per Deb's recommendation to work with staff to maximize green space.
Could we do that?
So you're modifying your motion?
Yes.
Does the seconder approve?
Yes.
The seconder approves. All right. And that's clear?
Got it, yes.
Any additional discussion? Are we ready to vote?
We are.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you said that goes to the City Council on September 19?
On September 19.
19?
Yes.
Seems like a long way down.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, that brings us to the last item on our agenda. Item four, discussion on architectural materials and alternative material process review for the 2017 Planning Commission work plan. Mr. Swaber.
Thank you.
You're back.
This, yeah, it's been a little while since we discussed this. This is our third meeting to discuss, if you may recall, at our last meeting, we had prepared this blue book, which compared all of the different communities, and what we basically found out was, we, Burnsville is, has more flexibility in their process, allowing deviations in architectural materials through CUP than the median city. But when we looked at the specificity and detail of the material requirements, we're about in the middle. So the direction that I heard from the Planning Commission that night was to try to move the detail and specificity of the requirements a little bit, be a little bit more lenient, move away from the median in that direction. So with that direction, myself, with others at Burnsville's planning staff, took a look at the definitions and requirements and tried to come up with some, some language that both limits the use of materials to what they are intended for, as well as removing some of the specificity that was previously included, or I guess I would say currently included in the code. So the first one was with the architectural metal. Currently, there is a definition of architectural metal panel, and that's specific to the paneling requirement of the code, and included that it shall not have exposed fasteners. When we looked at, you know, the target in both Apple Valley and Richfield, and some of the other development at Richfield, there were exposed fasteners in most of those cases. So with this, we're proposing to add the language that the metal be designed and manufactured to be exposed to the outdoors weather and elements of the Minnesota climate. Additionally, metal shall be installed and used for the purpose that it was intended, and then it's removing the, it shall not have exposed fasteners as a provision within the definition. That is the only change proposed within the definitions. Regarding the codes themselves, there is a change that was just simply to update the design elements listed there in 1B to be consistent with the rest of the code. At the end, that statement just had the number 1, not spelling out of 1, so it's just a correction since we're working in this section of the code. Regarding the other sections, we had two sections regarding major exterior materials, and then we had prohibited exterior materials. But there was actually a language in the prohibited section that spoke to using materials to a limited amount, to a 25%, and that seemed to, you know, be contradictory to a section of the code that starts out with restricted exterior materials. So to try to add some clarity, we basically broke that into two sections, having a new Section 4, limited exterior materials, and then renaming Section 5 to prohibited exterior materials. So that way, hopefully, people can understand that number 3 here, the major material, major exterior materials, you could use that to 100% of your building if you wanted. The limited materials, as this is proposed, would increase the percentage to 50%. So that is a change from the existing code, and then we basically are leaving the prohibited materials. So a couple other things we are changing is that in the existing code, some of the red lines is, one of them is cast-in-place paneling system would need a conditional use permit. That is now moved up with the rest of the paneling discussion, so cast-in-place panels would be allowed without a conditional use permit, the same as their other materials. And then the other part we're removing is that we're trying to clarify that painting of materials is permitted. There was a couple of sections, such as the one below the red line, where it says architectural precast panel systems are painted, so it seemed inconsistent that some materials couldn't be painted, other materials could be painted. But what we did want to make sure is that those painted materials are maintained, you know, kept from chipping and peeling and the like. Well, there's a section within the International Property Maintenance Code that the city of Burnsville uses that addresses that, not only for painted materials, but for all materials. So the area in blue, the sentence in blue towards the end that you see there, "All exterior materials, including painted exterior materials, shall comply with Section 304.2 Protective Treatments of the International Property Code." So that, that really is already in effect, but it's just clarifying here that if you're going to paint the exterior, if it chips, if it peels, you're going to go back out there and paint it again. But again, I want to clarify... But again, I want to clarify, you could already enforce that, but it's adding some clarity in the section of now that you can paint materials, you need to have the proper maintenance schedule with it to make sure that it's held intact. So when we look at the limited exterior materials, which is a new section, but essentially taking the former twenty-five percent limited, restricted materials and making its own section, we've increased that to fifty percent. We have added that same sentence about exterior materials and painted exterior materials that if it's painted, it needs to be maintained. So that's, that's essentially material from what is redlined here on the next page. That was under the old restricted material we're making its own section. And then I won't go into it as much detail for the business and mixed-use district because it's set up the same way, it's the same changes. So the building materials for both industrial and commercial, this is regarding the building materials stays the same. There are some other elements in these sections that are currently different, and they will stay as is. We're only proposing the, the same changes there. So I hope that fulfills the direction we had from the last time, that the process we have is good, so we didn't make any changes to the process. It was trying to add more flexibility or more materials to the materials that can be used in a building. So with that, my question is, are you okay with these recommendations? But I think before I ask you to answer that question, a little bit more about the process. The aim is to bring this to the City Council work session in September. They have not been briefed formally about what the Planning Commission has been discussing here. And then subsequently, based on your recommendation and their discussion, we would plan an October public hearing to recommend adopting these changes. So with that, I'd take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Swaber. Again, this is just for discussion purposes tonight, no formal, formal action, but I will ask commissioners, any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Commissioner Benke.
Looking through it, I mean, I have a hard time. Everybody knows I speak up from an architectural standpoint, and to me, even with what's been happening here, there's, there's, there's a lot of limits put on to a designer that was really trying to push things. Now, with that said, I think that it's, we've gone a long way toward opening things up a little bit, which I think is good. I think that I do have some issues text-wise with the ordinance, if you wanted to go back to the restricted materials for a second. I do believe that the material that you're referring to on the Targets in Apple Valley and Richfield that has the fasteners is corrugated metal, but yet it's, it's a prohibited material here. And I think that there's a perception that corrugated metal is only the typical farm corrugated metal. I wonder how, it's, it's a little bit like we did with the solar ordinance where I think the words are critical here, because I don't think this changes somebody bringing that to us right now. If somebody was to bring in something with that metal, I would expect to see it in here with the CUP.
What?
If that's not the goal, then I think something has to change here.
Before, can I ask a, I have very similar questions. I just want to clarify a couple of things. We did make a change in here in reference to the corrugated metal, in reference to that the material, metal shall be installed and used for a purpose that it was intended.
Right.
So I'd like to clarify something that, before you answer, something that Commissioner Benke said, because I do believe there, your, if we go back to your standard, when I was a kid putting corrugated metal on a, on a barn roof, the material is, is not intended for a wall application. It's not heavy enough, it's not, it doesn't have the, it doesn't, it's not designed for that. My, my opinion from a corrugated piece, per your conversation on the front of the, the Target and the Home Depot in Richfield, it is a corrugated product, but it is, has to be a heavier steel because it gets back to, it was, it was, shall be used for the purpose that it was intended. So with his question, I'd like to kind of dovetail with that and make sure we understand that.
I got an example here, too, that there's a brewery up in Minneapolis that has, it's in a converted grain bin, which is that same corrugated metal that you're talking about. And it is designed as a wall use, and it is, it has been converted into a building. Now, we don't have any grain bins in Burnsville that are going to be converted into breweries. However, I, I just am seeing that problem of the, of the wordsmithing here, that it hasn't really changed. Somebody could look at that and, and basically say, well, that's corrugated, we don't allow corrugated.
Well, I have...
Anyway.
I have a proposal for a solution. The, it, it appears to be a different color, but the same material in both the Richfield and, and Edina Targets that I'm referring to. Those corrugations are between about eight and twelve inches in width.
And they're at angles instead of curved, but they're...
I don't know that I want to get as far as angles and curves necessarily, but I, I think we can probably address the corrugation by adding corrugation less than six inches in width will probably limit a lot of those products.
I think, I think we're stuck in the same place, though. What if, what if we do have a very creative architectural design here? I mean, what I'm not seeing here is if, if, if somebody wanted to bring one in and wanted to, did they bring it as a CUP or a PUD amendment? I mean, if, if they brought, if somebody, so that still is there as an option?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And, and that's a help.
And the, the two are meant to work together, but I think to your point, the specific examples of Richfield or, or Richfield, as this is written, probably would require a PUD or a CUP because it says corrugated metal is not allowed. But that is, that is different than what you're both referring to of kind of the roofing material, that we could place, you know, that inch requirement, and then what is happening in Richfield and, and Edina wouldn't have to go through that PUD. Just to refer to the brewery you, you know, you're referring to, I, I'm familiar with that planning case. That grain bin wasn't there. That was actually moved in place, and they, you know, got a PUD from this. It's actually on the St. Paul side of Midway neighborhood, but yes.
I guess that sort of brings up something else, though, because the signage at Taco Bell and at Burger King have corrugated metal that is the smaller size.
Mm-hmm.
That would not meet that requirement.
That's right.
And that material is, is going to want to be allowed for them if it, if it came up again. I mean, I, I think that the problem is, we're, we're trying to eliminate a certain kind of corrugated material, but I think we've, we've thrown it all together still.
I, I think you've identified the issue. Can we come up with a solution?
That's, and that's what I'm trying to talk through here is, you know, how do you say no farm-type product, essentially? Because I think that's the kind of corrugation we're talking about.
Yep.
But then again, if, if someone did have a, or just designed, used it, what then?
And I think a, a PUD, if it's truly that unique of a design, that is being looked at both for an architectural design and structural standards, if they can come in and demonstrate that, you know, as Bang Brewing did to the city of St. Paul, that they have the right design professionals to convert a, a grain bin into a brewery, then that's something you can consider, but not outright permit by the ordinance.
Right. And I think that's the key. I mean, it, this sort of came at us because of a corrugated metal issue, and I can see the desire to manage it as opposed to eliminate it.
Yep.
I guess I sort of had the same struggle with the, the sheet metal issue, and I know that it wasn't an element here that was actually redlined, but it, I'm, I'm struggling a little bit with the term shall-not oil can. And it's the word shall in this case, because any flat metal oil cans. And trying to, you know, trying to be the judge of when it crosses the line becomes a problem. So, you know, I'm just wondering if while we're doing this, we shouldn't, I, I understand the goal here. You're looking for that, you're, you're looking for, you don't want that flat metal roof to look wavy, but it, it's almost, it almost comes down to be a, an installation problem, a, a maintenance problem and that kind of stuff. And I'm just wondering if there's a different word than shall-not that, that might be better here. And I, I threw some of them in my head, you know, may-not, even something as simple as that change might do it, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Well, I will tell you, I had to look up the turmoil can. That's, that's injured the ordinance. That was not, that was not added, yeah?
I, I knew what it was, but I, I wanted to get more detail, so I actually went, and there was a roundtable of professional engineers that work in the metal industry, and they basically explained it better than I ever could. But they also observed that it, it's a function of bending metal. You will get oil cans simply by doing that. There are things you can do to minimize it.
Right.
And I think that really is the goal that we're after here. It's just, the shall-not suggests that somebody could decide that it does. And it's, it's, it's not objective, it's very subjective.
Right.
I don't have an answer.
Any more comments or Commissioner Bradrick?
I'm, I'm excited about a lot of stuff. I, I'm excited that we're going to allow paint on brick. I mean, you know, if we ever want, you know, Chip and Joanna Gaines to show up, we've got to be able to paint brick.
Chiplap.
Chiplap.
Where's the chiplap?
No, you know, I was also pretty emotional about this because I believed in many cases we had applications where architectural steel was, we were, you know, requiring CUPs to do stuff for car dealerships, and, and the product was more than acceptable for what it needed to be put up. So I appreciate some of the other things that we've done. I also understand we're looking to not have a, a poor installation, and I don't know if we can get there. If it's, if we allow the material, then it, there has to be a, you know, it, it has to be a, a four-inch-on-center screw pattern or something. You know, I don't know if that's feasible, because in the past, to Commissioner Benke's point, we have allowed what I would consider to be farm panel for accents. We have it on the front of Northern Tool.
That was a planned unit development?
That was a planned unit development, and, and that was a big discussion at the time to allow that. That was the first one, I think, in, in town that we allowed. And there's a lot of kind of remodeled, refurbished retailers that are starting to use it. So I'm a little anxious to say that you just can't, you know, we, we can't use corrugated. I was hoping that metal shall be installed and used for purposes as it's intended, and I don't know if that gets us there. If you're going to take a lighter metal and put it on a wall, it, it, our inspector would have to approve that it's got a tighter nail, a tighter fastening pattern for it to work.
Or it's, or it's laminated to a substrate.
Yeah.
I mean, and that, but that, that, we can't dictate that.
And I, I wasn't saying I wasn't. I was just trying to think out loud about how we, how we fix this and, and make it a little easier for our applicants to, because it, it was frustrating for me to have a car dealership to have to come back to us to do something that they already had on their existing building across the street that had already been approved and the money and the, and the time that it took to, to make that happen for something that's very acceptable in, in, in almost, you know, any other application. You know, we had to do a, a planned unit development to allow the tilt-up concrete for the police garage, and I'm glad that we're not going to, you know, those are, there's, you know, tilt-up concrete's come a really, really long ways in the last ten years. So I'm, I'm excited about that. So I, I really wish we could maybe tweak this, and I don't have an answer for you, but I really wish we could do a little bit with this corrugated thing, too, because in, in my case, it's more about if they use it, we don't want them using it and have a poor installation.
Well, I will say that, you know, that the two sentences here in blue are not saying what that installation method is, but is intending that the applicant needs to show us that how they are going to install it and use it was, you know, is the accepted way to, to use it on a building. But, you know, to your point to the, the corrugated, you know, Menards would be an example of that. You know, that, that basically is corrugated metal they're installing. Now, in, in my opinion, I was not here when that original PUD was installed, those exteriors are not the public-facing side of, of Menards. You know, you're already in there buying building materials if you're back there to see that. But I don't think if we just simply eliminated corrugated, well, somebody could come in with that material and say, it's made for exteriors.
Right.
I want to use that material. And that's not the same material that's on the Targets at Richfield and, and Edina. That's, you know, specific architectural, you know, material that, that is designed for that, that purpose, but is not the same kind of mass-manufactured corrugated metal siding that even Menards, that is, that is designed, that, or that, that was created to be an exterior material.
Right. The metal building, yep.
Well, the original Menards.
Right. That's what they, the Paulburns.
That's what they built.
Exactly.
So that was obviously a, a variance when they built that building, but I don't think any of us were around then, so.
Any additional comments from Mr. Swaber? Commissioner Benke?
The oil can thing, just as an example here, you know, the whole metal, the whole metal thing, I was always struggling with the fact that a homeowner couldn't put a, a copper metal roof on a big window on the house. And I think that if somebody was to look at an installation that could not be perfectly flat, that could be the best example, because they are handmade and they are not flat. Again, I, I think I understand the direction that the shall-not oil can goes, but I think that it just becomes too subjective of a comment.
I will, I guess, just state that I didn't create this language. I don't have any personal dog in this fight, if you wish to remove it.
No, no, and I, I don't, actually, because I, I know that there's a goal there. I just think that while we're working on this, that should be one other element that may want to be wordsmithed a little more.
Yeah.
So.
And I'm, along with that, just looking for what's the best thing we can do to maintain, maintain some visual appearances, give our, our businesses and our homeowners a little better access to material, you know, and I have one last thing. You know, if you go back to metal shall be installed and used for the purpose it was intended, I haven't pulled the installation instructions for that thin of steel, what, what the nailing pattern needs to be on a roof versus a nailing pattern on a wall. It, it, it might, your wording might get us there.
Right.
You know? I don't know that.
Right.
The code also, the building code changes over time, so those things also change.
Well, and even just reading through this roundtable, I mean, they were talking about how, you know, you, you could have, have, the, the two edges of the panel might not have been cut square to each other, and when you fold them in from the edge, it could, that could be the problem. And, you know, we're talking about a fraction of an inch here. And, you know, but again, it's, you know, what's the goal, and how can we phrase it so that the city benefits and it's easiest for staff and for us? And I think that's the goal.
If I could, I guess, maybe make a commitment, what...
Remember, you're on TV.
Yeah.
Got it on tape.
What I, what I can look into is, is a little bit more of that same maintenance, property maintenance code, because, you know, I, I did some research, as you did, about oil canning, and there was kind of, maybe not equal, but also literature of oil canning happening when material isn't installed correctly in it, and, you know, the climate, it heats, it cools. it cools, that causes some of the bending. It wasn't the manufacturing, it was the poor quality of the material.
Environmental conditions.
Yeah.
Hot and cold and everything.
Yeah.
Yep.
So maybe the, the property maintenance code does address a lot of that, that if the material ages, you need to fix it or replace it. That may, I'd need to investigate, that may be a way to address that without it having to be in the definition. If the maintenance code already talks about what needs to happen if materials fail due to poor installation, or, or just, everything has a lifetime, and heating and cooling can, can break it after a while.
That's right.
Is that sufficient guidance for staff, this discussion?
Everything else looked really good, thank you.
Yeah, I want to, you guys lucked out in having the two commissioners with the highest level of expertise in this, in this subject matter here tonight. I, I don't have a lot of expertise there, I, but I do, you know, I think the original goal here was to provide some added flexibility, and I, from my perspective, I, I think it's, it's well on its way, so. That brings us to the, to the end of our agenda. Any updates from staff or commissioners?
No thanks, unless there's anything from the commissioners?
I just want to, before we have a motion to adjourn, I just want to extend our congratulations to our chair, Commissioner Workman, on the, the birth of another child, so that's why he is in absentia this evening, but anything else from commissioners?
Probably throwing something at the TV right now.
Yeah, probably, yes, this has probably gone a half hour too long or something, so. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second in any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.